All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome everyone. We do have a couple of additions to the agenda there.
Under personnel actions and reservations, we need to add two. The first one is Rosa Golden from her English teaching position in Omaha Central High School. And the second one is Warren Sykes from his teaching A D in football position.
Okay. All right. With those additions, I'll entertain a motion of 21-146, approval of agenda for regular meeting. Got a motion from Owen, second from Maggie, all in favor?
Which is?
E B S. All right, move into approved 21-147, payment of claims. Daryl.
Yeah, I'm gonna use the first checklisty report. If you wanna look at the ones that are more detailed after that. I only have one that I want to bring up. That's line number sixteen, check number twenty-four eight seventy from Symmetry Energy Solutions. That's the gas supplier, natural gas supplier that we have for the district. That bill is six thousand five hundred and thirty-six eighty-eight, but it was higher than that, and I will be discussing that in my strategic plan today. I'll get into where we're at on that. Like most utilities, the February bill was a little high, so I'll get into more details later. Everything else is typical monthly expenditures.
Any questions for Daryl on payment of claims listing? If not, I entertain a motion for approval of payment of claims. I'll move through the payment of claims today. Motion from Joe, second from E B H, all in favor? Okay. Daryl made a couple additions to the consent agenda. Unless there are other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'd like motion for consent agenda.
Got a motion from John, second from Joe, all in favor? All right. All right. You've got a couple of patrons that are joining us this evening that are requesting time to visit, so at this time, I guess Troy Lewis, you're listed first, so I'll welcome you down, sir. We've got a microphone, I'll have you guys use it.
Yeah, we can do a little mic. That's good, too, no?
Yep.
Okay. All right. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Troy Lewis. I'm not here because I want to be, but rather because someone has to stand up, and sometimes things in life don't change until people say enough is enough. I'm a father, a mail carrier, and I've been a cutmaster, den leader, and I'm a current scoutmaster of Troop Seventy-One right here in Seneca. Throughout Scouts, I have taken pies to the face, buckets of slime over my head, and told so many lame dad jokes that my scouts cringe each and every time I start talking around a campfire, and I love every minute of it. All of those things I do for one single reason: smiles. The same smiles this board continues to vote to cover up and prevent the world from seeing. There is nothing that lights up a room quite like... Sorry, excuse me. Nothing that lights up a room quite like a child's smile. A smile can mean so many things to a child. It helps with emotional growth, acceptance, and a sense of common ground. Answer me this: how many girls have you stolen that first smile from a crush they've had and never saw him smiling back because of your mask? How many smiles have been stolen from a boy just trying to impress that girl he's head over heels for because of your mask? How much bullying has been inspired behind already busy teachers' eyes by a mask mandate and kids thinking they should be the ones enforcing it? What about kids with anxiety issues? Do you even realize their mandate could be possibly causing lifelong anxiety issues for some kids? Or what about claustrophobia? Special moments in time lost forever or horrific issues for some caused forever? I mean, are you seriously gonna tell me these kids are safer playing basketball with all that physical contact in a classroom where one of the main rules has always been to keep your hands to yourself? None of us knew what we were getting into a little over a year ago, but many of us have come around to the general idea it is time to move on. The other day at the middle school track meeting, I saw the scariest thing I've ever witnessed in my life. A girl eventually, evidently not sure how the masks work, or just so used to using it or scared to take it off, did not take it off, and she wore the four...ran the four-hundred-meter dash. She's not even from our school. About three hundred meters in, she collapsed and passed out, and I mean looked lifeless passed out. Though this board doesn't have any bearing on that, many other school boards just similar to this one do. This made me so angry, and it simply has to stop. Even my fifth grade teacher asks me all the time, "Dad, when are they gonna let us breathe normally again?" It's so hard to breathe through these masks all day long. Then there's the most recent news of the teachers' unions and the C D C emails where the teachers' unions have clearly been influencing the C D C guidelines from almost the very beginning. I mean, what is it about the C D C anyway? I feel like the letter shouldn't stand for camp decided crap because they...they only... They've proven time and time again to give us inconsistent guidance. They have changed back and forth and back and forth, and don't even get me started on the all-powerful Saint Fauci of D.C. It's almost as if someone keeps changing the rules behind the scenes to suit the narrative, but nothing to see here. Numbers and science, science and numbers, that's all we hear about anymore, often with twisted facts to suit an already failing agenda. In Kansas, we're at one hundred and twenty-nine point seven deaths per one hundred thousand people, according to what K D H E had listed online when I checked earlier last week. If you can even believe the numbers of an administration that has made local news, more than once were tweaking the numbers to look the way they want them to, but nothing to see here either. Heck, the C D C itself even came out and said only about thirteen percent of deaths stated as COVID were actually only COVID deaths. So in Kansas, that actually reduces down to about sixteen point eight deaths per one hundred thousand, seventeen if you round up. Seventeen in one hundred thousand. Our county had a little higher numbers, as we all know. Fifty-five deaths in our county of about ten thousand residents. Or if the C D C is right, that's only seven deaths due to actual just COVID deaths in Omaha County. The last part of these statistics that counts most is age. The age of death from COVID, the average age of death from COVID is about seventy-eight years old, while ironically, the average age of death in America is also about seventy-eight years old. So as it turns out, the top result from a death from COVID, the worst pandemic in recent history, is actually having just lived a full and natural life. I'm so sick of all the fighting over this stupidity. Stop mindlessly following government agencies' recommendations, especially when in most of our government's opinions, our pets have more rights than an unborn child or those trapped in human trafficking. You see, it's all about fear, my friends, and many have bought all in on fear mongering being sold. I honestly believe each and every one of you believe you're trying to do the right thing. I don't blame any of you for being uninformed, misinformed, or even misled. That's totally forgivable. But it's not really about whether you're right or I am. It's about not representing the majority opinion of those that voted you in, and that's not something that can just be able to simply be forgotten. We all know some numbers in medicine and other policies are influenced in some way by power and money through Big Pharma or lobbyists. As with anything, it's always about the money. Here, I have in my hands the all-high and mighty masks, which have a disclaimer right on the box, you can read it for yourself, saying they specifically do not spread or prevent any bacteria or disease. For the politically challenged who believe they will save us all because the mainstream media told us so, viruses are smaller than bacteria. You know why that disclaimer is on there, don't you? It's to prevent them from being sued because no matter how much people like this board may give these masks power, they simply do not work. These are the same masks handed out day in our schools. I know, because at the very beginning, I bought many of them and donated them to our school, because none of us knew what we were getting into. I would never, ever tell you that your child is gonna be forced to go without a mask if they wanna wear one or you want them to wear one. So why are you gonna force my child to wear one instead of my right to parent my own kids? And how dare you force our amazing educational staff to continue to enforce this type of overreach, possibly permanently damaging the perception of our great teachers through the eyes of some of our kids? This is where, in my opinion, and I can only assume others here tonight as well, feel you have crossed the line. What's next? Forced vaccinations to be part of this school district? Kansas Statute sixty-five-three-zero-five states, and I'm paraphrasing here, "You cannot control the health, medical care, psychological, or emotional well-being for parents when it comes to our First Amendment rights for our kids." And I believe we are all made well enough by our Creator to stand and survive against any virus or disease that comes our way if we are meant to do so. So in doing this, you are stepping into my family's religious freedoms, enforcing my children to wear masks. There are even some on this board that I could cite instances and could call out as hypocrites compared to the way they voted, but that's not what I'm here tonight to do. I could ask for an answer from this board as to why most, every single picture posted from senior trip has virtually no masks in most of them. But the point is that we shouldn't be wearing them in the first place. The bottom line is this: if you vote to keep these masks in our school, I promise you, I will send my kids to school without a mask every single day, and I will tell them to politely and respectfully put them on only when instructed to do so by an adult at school, and then come home and tell me who or when they were told to do it, and I will file a grievance, a complaint, or whatever is in my power as a parent, day after day after day. And I will encourage other parents to do the same. I will turn up so often in your meetings that you'll get more annoyed at seeing me or hearing my name than you are by phone call telling you your car warranty's just expired on your twenty-year-old car in the backyard. I will be on the phone with our principals daily, giving them an earful over your decision, which is not their fault and not fair to them. I will work tirelessly to gather a group of like-minded parents, and we will teach our kids how to respectfully decline wearing a non-doctor prescribed medical device until this madness stops. I highly doubt this board wants to make headlines over removing fifty or sixty kids from its classrooms over repeated refusal to wear masks. And just in case you're wondering, yes, I will make that phone call if they get removed from school for it. I will go to great lengths for my kids, and I don't care what anyone thinks about me for it. You see, I can be a great ally, but if you bring the fight to my family and my right to parent my kids, all bets are off. And if you're mistaken, the wheels are already turning. Many are working behind the scenes now to remove many of you through any legal means we have. The best thing you can do right now is admit the obvious. The majority of the parents of this want this mandate gone, and at least show that you respect those that your seat is designed to serve. This does not mean release the mandate until we get a single case, and then we turn tail and run from the first signs of it back under the rock we're trying to keep this district hiding under right now. You see, you represent us, the people that elected you, and not only just your feelings or interests, while they are important, they are no more important than mine or anyone else is in this room tonight. That is a problem in all politics today. Vote me in and I'll vote the way I...I mean, you want. Ultimately, I am disappointed in the way we are allowing fear to control everything we do now as a nation, as a state, and as a community, and that last one community really hurts. We are a great community with great values, faith, and common ground mutually, but yet by looking at our school mandate, it looks more like we're lacking severely in the faith department these days. You see, I place my faith in one single place, and that's not with the C D C and definitely not in any single mortal man. I place my faith in God and God alone to get us through this. If we all do the same, if we all do the same, then we have nothing to fear. We cannot lose. In fact, before I came in here tonight, I said a prayer for each and every one of you in this room tonight, that we may come together as a community. I can be mad at you, and I can still love you as a brother or sister in Christ, but it is also our job to call each other out when our faith is lacking. I don't find it to be a coincidence that the farther away that we get from this book as a nation, the darker it becomes. Would everyone that's here tonight because they want the mask mandate lifted, please raise your hand and show the board real quick, please. Take a little of my time for your voice to at least be seen. Thank you. I listened to the last meeting, and I heard three main things. The first, respect opinions of certain individuals and certain opinions, but what about the parents' opinion? You know, the ones that voted you into these seats? Second, not a restrictive environment. Well, I'll put it this way: it's a restrictive environment when you get between me and parenting of my child. Third is more about what I did not hear than what I heard being said. I did not hear the words "I spoke to the parents that I represent, and they want this." You see, friends, we all take calculated risks every day. You are more likely to be hit by a car crossing the street than you are to die from COVID, but yet you got into your personal vehicle and drove here tonight. It is time for us as a community to take the first step off the curb and stop being so fearful of what's on the other side of the street. I'll spare you the sermon, even though it's needed, but Ephesians six, ten through eighteen, look it up for yourself. We all should just put on the armor of God, because it is stronger than any mask ever could be. Lastly, to everyone in this room, unless things change around our country, there is an unbelievably dark cloud of division coming across this nation in the not-too-distant future. And in a world of chaos and uncertainty, I would much rather our school and our community be a beacon of stability, led by faithful God for other towns in our area to look up to instead of us towering in fear. Thank you.
Steve, the floor is yours.
I don't know if I can hold up. It'd be better than Troy said here, but I'll give it a try. My name is Steve O'Neill. I have two kids that attend Omaha Central currently. One's in eighth grade and one's in eleventh. Just a little bit about my background. I've spent thirty years working for the government, which is kind of ironic given the level of distrust I have for the government. Twenty-five years of that I've spent serving in the United States Army. I was initially enlisted, and then eventually I became a commissioned officer in a helicopter pilot. I've lived in three different countries for at least a year or more, which includes Germany, Iraq, and Korea. I've spent significant time in many other countries throughout my career, including Norway, Tunisia, Ireland, Panama, Italy, and Bosnia and Herzegovina. My primary job during my career was to coordinate and synchronize the use of Army aviation resources to accomplish missions ranging from mass casualty evacuations to resupply to tactical combat deployment. My education includes graduating from the Command General Staff College, which is a master's level military course of study, where I majored in Homeland Security Operations. In a nutshell, I was blessed with a job that sent me all over the planet and gave me the opportunity to see just how truly special our constitutional republic is. There is no country on this globe where people have the rights that we have. As I begin, I want to thank you all again for taking the steps to open the school. I know the intense amount of pressure on educators. You have a union that was demanding ridiculous things, ridiculous things. And the state of California, the teachers' union demanded that they defund the police department before they agreed to open the schools. Does anybody remember that story? So the fact that you guys actually took upon yourself the decision to come up with a few things that we could live with at the time, including a mask mandate, to open the school last August, I just wanna say I really do appreciate that. That's not a small thing. With all the unknowns, the constant warnings from the media about disparity of this virus, the ever-changing approach in dealing with it by the supposed national expert, Dr. Fauci, it was difficult to identify the true risk to students and teachers. Beginning of the school year, having a mask mandate made total sense. Nobody really knew what to expect. So you deserve credit for having encouraged opening the school. However, during the April board meeting, you were presented with a proposal from your constituents to change one word in the mask policy. One word, from required to recommended. You were presented with three individuals that gave you actual facts of the effects on children from wearing that mask. Actual facts. In return, after they got done speaking, there was this many questions. Zero from the five members that eventually voted to keep the mask in place. You didn't ask one question. To me, that leads me down this path to soon...
You already did what you were gonna vote on.
Didn't matter what anybody said. When you walked in, you were gonna vote to keep the mask on, the five people that voted for it. So, when I spoke to the...after the initial April meeting, I spoke to the superintendent, I also talked to Jason, because I wanted to understand where the information was coming from. I was told the director of the hospital said that he still recommended wearing masks. One person in the community, one person, was in the power to determine that our kids have to still wear masks. I also talked to Mr. Coleman about the fact that when we look at this disease or this virus, and we look at the C D C's numbers, the C D C estimates, or he and I talked about the flu, one of the comments made at the last meeting is that nobody has the flu this year. Apparently having to do with people wearing masks. I don't think anybody really legitimately buys that. But I looked up what the C D C estimated for flu deaths since two thousand and ten. This is what their site says. "C D C estimates that influenza has resulted in between nine million and forty-five million illnesses." That's a pretty broad range. Between one hundred and forty thousand and eight hundred and ten thousand hospitalizations, and between twelve thousand and sixty-one thousand deaths annually since two thousand and ten. The reason that's relevant is I asked Mr. Coleman, "How many people died with the flu?" Because we count COVID deaths based on how many people died with it, or if somebody was infected, they recovered and then they died later on, old age. They're counted to COVID death. So to me, it was totally irrelevant to bring that up and consider that and whether or not we continue down this road with these mandates. As a member of the military, I have seen the effects of socialism, communism, government overreach, whatever you wanna call it, in every stage from the beginning to the end. I worked on contingency operations and developed plans that included how to control a message to control public opinion. In other words, control the people to get them to do what we want them to do. I've seen governments that control the media, similar to what we see happening in this country today. We perform mandatory emissions, where we just installed internet access in remote countries so that people can see what the truth was and not what their government was telling I've seen firsthand how our own government uses the media to sway opinion. There's always one underlying theme in those planning conferences. This is restrictive, but it's for their own good. That's not how things work in this country. We were founded on the principles of individual liberty and freedom. Some of those that were mask wear have asked us, who just want the freedom to choose, to cite our sources. We don't have to do that. You have to have the data, hard, irrefutable data, to restrict somebody's rights. And I think we've lost that. We scared the hell out of everybody, and we decided, "Well, how can we solve this problem? Let's just have everybody mask up, stay six feet away, and wash their hands a whole Eighteen months later, not one study, not one, that says masks work. Not one! You have nothing to base this decision on. You have no hard information to base this decision on. Troy touched on Kansas Statute sixty-five-three-zero-five. I wanna talk just briefly on Senacel Boarding, because I filed a grievance, and it was handled by Mr. Coleman, and like I said, he and I had a conversation. I've looked through Kansas Senacel Boarding. I've read this highlighter text. You know what it doesn't say in here is that the school board can allocate their responsibility and designate somebody else to determine whether a grievance is valid or not. It doesn't say that. And I talked to Mr. Coleman about it, and I pointed that out to him. And I understand that there is a lawyer hired by the Kansas School Board Association that says it's no problem. There's wiggle room there. You go ahead and designate the superintendent. He can make the determination, and then tell that somebody takes us to court, "This is how we'll do it." That's not right. You guys are directed in this instead of Boarding. The board is the one that handles these grievances. The board. And it's ridiculous, I know, for us to expect you all to get together every time I file a grievance, and Troy files a grievance, Dylan files a grievance. It's ridiculous, right? It's supposed to be brutally painful for any board or group of elected officials to restrict anybody's rights. It's supposed to hurt. Because in this country, you don't get to do that. Not for the better or for the public health. That's not in the Constitution. It's not. You guys are, as a school board, you guys are the last ones. You're the holdouts. Everywhere around us, every community, has gotten rid of the mask mandates, but you guys held on to it. You've held on to it. You've been asked over and over again, "Just show me what your evidence is." And you can't produce it. It's a rhetorical question, because there is no data. And if masks worked, you have a plethora of data to share with us, right? We're eight... We're eighteen months into a pandemic. You should have just piles of that. But the irony is, everywhere you look, where mandates are removed, the case count is non-increase. State, community, wherever you look. And here, I got a thing for everybody here. As soon as those kids walk out of the school, those masks come off. They don't wear them. And they hug on each other, and they wrestle around. They don't wear masks at all. So the contact you're trying to restrict in school is completely pointless, because as soon as they walk out, and I'm talking about every single person's children, everybody's, are running around town without masks on. Every single one of them. So, for tonight, I'm requesting that you drop the mask requirements, develop, or put on the schedule to develop science-based metrics for implementing any kind of mandate at all. Social distancing, hand washing, whatever, whatever it is. Science-based metrics, meaning this many cases before we jump to this highly restrictive process. We need to base it on facts and not give it to one guy. Period. Because I guarantee you that I can go to that hospital and find doctors who disagree with the director. I guarantee Finally, in fairness to all of you, Troy touched on it. We are working on the five members that voted to keep the mask mandate in place, to get your call, and to put people in your place that are going to address the issues down the road, that we have to be concerned with. Forcing kids to get vaccinations, which really, it's not even a vaccination. It's a mandatory shot, because nobody knows what it does. We want to make sure that the board sitting here is going to listen to fairness when we say we don't want critical race theory or the sixteen ninety-five. So in fairness, I just want you to be advised, if you would like to resign tonight, we've got people from your district that will fill your seats.
All right. Questions from the presenters from the board? I do appreciate both of you coming in and sharing your opinions. I've made some notes. I think I'll follow up with each of you individually versus the public here tonight, but I'll catch up with you. What's that? Oh, sorry. I was thanking them for being here tonight. Appreciated their input and insights. I said that I had made a couple of notes, and that I would follow up with each of them individually in the spirit of time here tonight. So, thank you for that. No questions other than board, we're going to move on to item twenty-one.
All right. Questions, I'd like to thank both for coming and taking their time and sharing data and passion. And we've been proactively doing this. I appreciate it.
I think, I guess, one point I would want to make is, you know, I know from the last board meeting, there might be an assumption that there, you know, was maybe some lack of listening or lack of gathering other input. I would want to make sure from my perspective, and I can't speak for every board member, but there was a healthy amount of discussion that I had before and after that, that garnered plenty of input of all opinions of the community, patrons, et cetera. So, on my behalf, I would say the insinuation that there was no listening or not taking feedback into account, from my perspective, I'd like to clear that up. That'd be a hundred percent inaccurate. Okay? I just want you to know there's a lot of
That's fair. I just didn't hear...
No, no, no. What's important, this is meant just for the two of you. This is for this entire group. Your opinions are important, and your opinions matter as much as anyone's. It does. It does. The fact that you're here says a lot about our community and that we're trying to get through this, and we're trying to mend where we've been, like many communities. But we all have to be careful that our opinion is the only one, and if we're the one that's here for the night and were heard, it's the only one that any board may hear. I will only speak on my opinion, but I will tell you, I've had as many people that understand why we've continued for a little longer to leave the school, as I have heard from people that are adamantly opposed to continuing even for a day. I'm not smart enough to know what the right answer is. What I am smart enough to know is I do not like for one minute what the hell we're living with in our community and many others. If I could turn back time and go back to the way the world was, God knows I'd do it in my heart. Okay?
You can, Jason.
And we're, and we're, and we're, and we're going to work on that. So, in fairness of time, we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is twenty-one dash one So on twenty-one dash one fifty-two, for, just as a refresher on where we left the last board meeting, from what I remember there, we have agreed that at the last board meeting, did we pass or recommend, how did we leave, from what I recall, we were going to move into summer school with recommended, not requirement. Is that where we've left this?
That is where we're at. The recommendation that I made, and continue to make, is to finish out the school year in masks, and start in June first, which gets us into any of the summer activities, go to recommended department.
So, so as a, and I guess let me start right now for the crowd. I appreciate you being here. We're going to hold a conductive meeting, we're going to hold a productive meeting, but this will not turn into a lot of noise and bannering back and forth. We've respected, we'll respect every presenter, and I'm going to expect that you respect this discussion. We'd love having you here, we want you here, but it's not going to turn into a shit show, pardon my French. So, let's proceed. So, back to your...
Yeah. So, that's the recommendation from me, and after talking to lots of people, is to lift the mandate starting June first, which would include summer school drivers ahead. That'll get us through all those activities through the summer. And then, as was suggested, look at between now and the June board meeting, come with gating criteria matrix, or whatever you want to call it, when and if we would return the mandate.
Okay. So that, I guess for the board, I wanted to at least start with resetting the clock, where we left the last board meeting specific to this topic, so we knew where we were. I know there are folks on the board that would like to have some discussion about that. And we talked on the last meeting that each board meeting moving forward, we would have this agenda item as needed. So, I know I've heard from one of you specifically that would like to visit about this. So, John, if you're prepared to visit, Ben, I know you would like some time to talk tonight. Would you like to start with some thoughts on where we are, and then what you'd like to say as we move forward?
My opinion, I think this school has done a tremendous job. Administrators have done a very good job getting us in school this year, and staff has done excellent work over this situation. But like that, there's a time and rule, time and place, fairness. There was a time for masks. I think that time's come and gone. It's been proven that this county, schools can operate without mask mandates, all around. It's also weird. Transmission from small children is not a risk. It just doesn't happen. If a problem comes into a hole, it comes from a parent bringing it home, or a high school kid bringing it home, that actually can look around on their own without the kids. Little kids, they're not. But yes, the little kids are the ones that suffer. A high school kid comes to school, puts the mask on before he walks in the door, wears the hallway gift to his class, takes a photo. My daughter was in high school. She had one class, and she had to wear the mask all the time. Mask was not a big deal for her. For most of the parents I've talked to, from high school kids, just have high school kids, they pretty much say the same thing. It's not as big a deal. Another seven and a half days left. But every day before, every time before I come to school board meeting, my daughter comes up and she tells me, Dad gives them the masks, especially on the bus. They wear the mask. They get on the bus before seven thirty in the morning. They wear the mask all most of the day. Then they ride the bus an hour whole, with the mask on. You can see my daughters, or my kids' face when they go, pull that mask off after four thirty in the afternoon. You tell me it doesn't have an effect on them? It's not hurting their health or their emotional well-being? That's my kids. That's why I vote for masks. There's time and place for it. It's come and gone. Transmission rate is low in this county. It's been low for most of the spring. Why are we trying to keep masks on? You can go anywhere in the county without a mask, except for probably the hospital and the rest of them, and the Hall Central School. Two houses with the most practiced students, one house with the lowest-risk group. It's plain to see that the little kid, I don't care if you keep the high school kids on them, because you want to worry about postseason sports. I understand that. Any other justification for keeping them on the eighth grade below, I can't understand one bit. That's my opinion. That's my story to my kids, and that's what this does. You can't tell me that the best thing for them is for them to wear their mask another seven and a half days. Moving their mask now will give them hope for next, coming in next school. To restore faith that these people in our decision make sound, common sense decisions on their behalf. That's my position.
Thanks, Sean.
I don't want it to take away from what has been accomplished this year. We've accomplished a great deal, and the staff has been a big part of it.
Thank you, John. Open it up to others that would like to add any particular input on where we stand as a board currently.
I will add that, you know, I understand that masks are wildly unpopular with some of you, and I understand that. I understand that you don't want your kids wearing a mask. But the problem is, if your kid isn't wearing a mask, and another kid is wearing a mask, nobody's doing any good. For the mask to be effective, everybody has to wear one. And that's just happening. Your CDC website that you cited earlier, if you get on there, you will notice the gradual decline in the charts and the graphs when people wear masks. The ones that you say don't include one person or class masks. They include other graphs, too. You can see this gradual decline. And they do work. And as a hospital employee, I wear a mask every day, all day. I take people's oxygen levels all day, every day. There is such a big blow up over something that is so small, and that just keeps everyone protected. And I understand some of you don't agree with that. I think everyone here is taking a side. I don't expect what I say to change your opinion, and that's fine, but I just, you know, in my experience, the proof is in the pudding.
And I apologize. I apologize. I really do.
The only thing that I have to say is, what if your, what if I allow her to wear a mask?
I defer.
Just let her finish. Let her finish. Let her finish. Let's keep this respectful.
You're not going to agree with me?
I just feel like I'm being disrespected, not allowing my kid to not wear a mask. I'm not forcing her child to not wear a mask.
So the mask work with both people wearing it. And that is when they work, and that is when they're most effective. There is a controversy that's more than... I agree with a lot of cases. I have heard from people who do not like the mask, but I have heard from just as many people who want to continue the mask, who appreciate the mask being in place. So while I understand your side, I advise to continue to choose to keep the mask in place until the June first date, and that is what.
Well, half of the two schools are just going together. One wanted to keep purple, one wanted to keep blue, and look, we have one blue.
I agree with most of you that sit in the stands, that we'll have said, I mean, we follow Robert rules here. Glad you're here. We want you to give me a time to sign up, and we appreciate that very much. We can't let anything send an argument from the leechers down here. But with that, I, John said it very well. I understand there's many things we do to protect our health, and if we follow everything that we're supposed to do to keep ourselves one hundred percent safe, like one of you said we would, we'd have seat belts on buses. We take many risks in our life because of the freedom that we have, as free will as human beings, our way, our Constitution. Masks are simple, but it still is a mandate that is not proven to be scientifically one hundred percent true to stop disease and stop virus. The higher we're... And what we do with animals is we disturb the beauty, which is a big part of why there's a decline in cases in this country, because we get exposed, we build antibodies, and some people die with COVID, some probably. But I agree with John completely that one day without the mask for these kids would be a great thing. And I know there's huge worry that what's it going to be next? We'll have an uptick in the flu next year. We've got to wear masks. Or something else comes around, we're going to wear masks. Do we require vaccines? That's, that's the worry. The mask for a small symptom is something we can change, we can have control over. And the worry, I understand, is where is this leak? And that's where I sit.
Again, anyone else, you're not required to offer any other input if you don't feel the need to. I'm opening the floor to anyone else that would like to share any particular personal points of view.
All I have to offer is, I've always been around science. I've always been used to science changing. It changes daily. It changes every fifteen minutes. The more you learn, it changes. I've also worked my entire career around people who wore masks. You just wear the mask. It didn't hurt anybody. It didn't cause illness. You just do it. There's countries that wear masks for a lot of reasons, and their kids grow up fine. It's just part of what it is. And so, I have no problem with wearing masks. I don't like it. Sometimes I choose to, sometimes I choose not to, but I believe in masks. And when it comes to disease, yeah, some masks are better than other masks. You can't make any blanket statements that all masks protect you from disease, or no masks protect you from disease. You're just kidding yourself if you head down that path. That's all I have to say.
All right. I guess I'm going to save myself for last, if you have any thoughts, okay? Carol, do you have any kind of water? I've got an alley in my mouth. You know, Dr. Max? Sorry. But anyway, one of the couple of points I would like to make, I guess, from the last, last time that we were together, and I guess just to clarify, so those of you that took the time to be here tonight, also here as well, you know, from my personal perspective, the only reasons I had personally for continuing to support what we were doing from a mask standpoint, was really to ensure several things. First and foremost, for me, it's about kids being in the classroom, in the learning environment. That's, that's where they learn best. I think everyone here is going to agree with that, and you wouldn't be here if we didn't want kids in our schools. Unfortunately, to ensure that we have that as successful as possible, with the rules we're expected to play by within the district, if we want to keep kids in school, and we want to avoid a high number of quarantine events that happen, that's where the masking piece comes in. I don't personally like that. I, I don't like my kids having to wear the mask, but I also don't like the thought of them trying to not learn in the school environment. So, in my opinion, I was willing, I'm willing to finish out where we started, which has turned out to be a fabulous year, and thanks to many people, some that are sitting here tonight. to many people, some that are sitting here tonight. So that was one. Second, our kids, just like we were when we were kids, get one shot at being a kid. For some, that means more activities or other things other than just the classroom, which I feel is, is very important for those that choose to pursue. So knowing the history of this district and success we've had, and I don't care if it's, I had a daughter on the play this, this spring, you know, I've had siblings, kids in extracurricular athletic events, had good friends as kids in those events, many levels of success as a district that I didn't want to see get shortened because of the fact that we had many kids that had to miss it. Most importantly, probably in all that, is knowing that we have a senior class that is getting, going to experience the one thing they get one time in life, which is going to be an opportunity of graduation and a senior trip. So for me personally, those are all the things that were important that we try to protect. And the best way that I could see to do that was to ensure we didn't let quarantining effect come in. Now, with that being said, it is my opinion we're past the vast majority of those hurdles at this point in time. With the fact that we've got graduation coming this weekend, we've got seniors out of school. You know, I, I think for me personally, there were some great points to be made tonight around giving our kids a sense of hope that not wearing a mask this year, I think is a great signal of what this board is thinking. Now, I know we have a, a plan in place to remove these as of June one. I guess the question I have in my mind is, you know, is it, is it a, how much harm are we really going to do to ourselves if we allow K through eighth to finish out the year without masks? I understand from a high school perspective, I'm trying to protect the potential for graduation and participation in some of the extracurriculars. I feel like that is important to protect. Given no more than what we're really talking about, considering where we've been, I'd struggle to see why we would give that up at the high school level. But from a personal health and wellness and, you know, from an impact, you know, to member more staff, to be chosen to be here tonight, I, I don't feel personally like I, we would put anyone in great harm's way with a few days without this. I definitely am of a strong belief that if nothing changes between now and the next fall, if we're in similar scenarios like we are now, we need to be in an environment without masks. I am in no way prepared to consider the new normal to include this. But I think we've done a fabulous job of getting through what we had to get through. So I feel like there needs to be some kind of an indication to this district that we are ready to move forward, even if it be a small step. If it needs to be starting June one, it needs to be starting June one. But I'm definitely in belief that we need to move, we need to start to move forward to the next level. Yes. Because I do not feel where we're at today is where we need to be long term. So we got this agenda item on the, on the agenda for discussion. I am open for suggestions for any alterations to our current plan, which is to remove masks as of June one, or if we want to continue with that plan, make it effective June one. I guess from my personal perspective, I, I would like to see us take a, what might be a better step by some and a smaller step by others, but I would like to make a motion that we affect you. We needed, how long would you need, Daryl, to make the change?
We could have twenty-four hours so that we can communicate and make sure that you put preschool people in the old room.
Yes. I, from my perspective, and again, this isn't an effort to protect our high school kids from missing anything that a quarantine might catch, but I would propose that we begin Wednesday of this week with preschool through eighth grade, recommended but not required, and continue freshman through senior with masks required until the end of the year. And then begin June first with recommend but not required for any district activity.
What I would have. My position, my point for not doing the high school is, in my opinion, we still have underclassmen who are going to want to participate in some level. And with graduation, we've got what I would hope will be postseason track, postseason golf, postseason baseball, that in my opinion, it's not worth risking or, based on quarantine. Not, I'm not worried personally on someone getting so sick that we regret this. I think we'll pass that. But I do worry about quarantine effects on those kids and groups and the unable participants.
Yeah, I get that. And I, what I don't like is the mask is supposedly supposed to keep you healthy and make a decision based on a rule that allows us to stay out of quarantine. And that, yeah, just that, that's part, I think, I would part with that for everything. I know that high school kids can't. How well they're worn. And if we're only wearing them to prevent a quarantine. And how many do we have in quarantine? Many high school kids quarantine. Is anyone not been quarantined because they haven't had a mask on the last couple of months?
Well, from what I understand, Marysville's got a baseball player and a track athlete now. And I, I don't, I don't disagree. I just, I'm at the point where we're talking seven school days. We're going to make a step in the right direction. We're going to send a signal supporting that from just my group opinion. But at the same time, based on the rules that are out there today, we're going to protect kids from missing out on once in a lifetime deal. I, that's why, for my.
I'm not opposed to the first step in the right direction.
Yeah.
And my, I'm satisfied with that.
That's, for me, that's one. That's, that's my.
Is that a more important way?
Yeah. So that was a motion. There's a second. Okay. So there's a motion and a second. And again, for clarification, the motion was to begin Wednesday of this week with preschool through eighth grade, recommended but not required, continue at the high school required through the end of the school year, and then beginning June first, as we discussed in the last board meeting, with a recommend but not require masks on. So that's the motion with a second. So all in favor of that motion, raise your hand. All right. All opposed? Okay. With that being said, there are, with the past action taken, if no future, without another motion tonight or that's approved, the way the district has currently left is if we begin June first with a recommend but not require?
That needs to be added. So that would be a change. So we'll have the motion to put that in place.
Or how did we leave it officially, I guess? Was it the beginning of summer school last time?
We discussed it, but there was never a motion made that was approved.
Okay.
We just discussed it.
Okay. So we need to make a motion tonight then to get that officially.
Yes.
Dave?
I'm looking for a, because of the removal of the mask mandate starting June first.
He said he made a motion to approve the removal of the mask mandate beginning June first. Okay. So we got a motion to approve the removal of the mask mandate beginning June first. Is there a second? Okay, there's a second for me. Okay. All in favor? All right. So we will begin in the district June first with no masks required, recommend the rule. Thank you for the board. Thank you for the discussion on it. Want to offer definitely a special thank you to those that are here on either side of this subject. I would ask all of us again to keep in mind, you know, we, we're only going to get to the other side of this together. We're not going to get there apart. I think if you think about it in terms of where we've been and where we're going, we're, how many school days we got left?
Seven and a half.
We got seven and a half school days left. What, wait a minute. Are you correcting, Daryl?
I gotta make sure it's great though, you two.
I, I think as we move forward, and again, in all seriousness, as we move forward, we need to keep in mind that on this particular subject, you know, in seven and a half days, we're going to be in a place where we're closer to being where all of us want to be versus light years apart. I do appreciate the representation on both sides of this. It's definitely a, a touching subject and one that hits home pretty deep for a lot of people. I would also, I guess, caution anyone in the group to leave here tonight and make assumptions on how this subject has gone or hasn't gone and attaching future possibilities to any of that. You know, that's a, that's a little bit, a little bit of walking terrorists down at the same time. I think the opinions that you bring and the information is very valid. And I'll, there's some great points that both of you guys made tonight. We'll, we'll talk more hopefully this week. Appreciate you bringing those. Thank you again for the group for being here. And we're going to go ahead and move on. All right. So twenty-one dash one fifty-three, presentation by HTK. Give me to move the desk.
Yeah, you won't have to do a little work.
Yeah. So Zach is here from HTK. And if you don't know, HTK architects have literally built every building in this building since the high school was built. They, they were not the architect for the high school. Every other building around there has been through HTK. And as we did the survey for future needs of the facilities, we did the survey and then we shared those surveys with Zach and his group from HTK. And they started coming up with some long range planning and short term planning. And that's what we're going to present about tonight. He actually is the architect of the junior city in here. So he, he is very familiar with the district and has worked with us. So we're going to turn, I'm going to turn over to Zach and let him present.
I will say, HTK was actually the architect on the high school as well. I was not, but HTK did that to nineteen sixty-five or so. And so HTK was, did the original high school building along with many other high schools that look like that around the state, which you know this. But as Daryl mentioned, I'm Zach Steed. I'm a principal at HTK Architects. Also with me tonight, I have Jen Cannon over there and Louis Weiser. Both the, Jen just recently completed the, the link between this building and the high school. And has been a, this project manager on that. So both of those two individuals will be working on this project as we, we start to develop plans for looking at what, what future work might look like at the high school, as well as looking at the assessment of the building systems from a lot of the summer's engineers. They were the engineers that were involved in the most recent project there. Through this process, really started off with the facilities assessment, looking at the build, the condition of the building, the kind of condition of the infrastructure of the building, the systems in the building, as well as the capacity for the building to meet the educational goals of the district. Whether that's providing space to appropriately teach in, or in a lot of cases, the additional student support spaces that are needed, as well as just the general classroom space, making sure that the district has sufficient classroom space, educational space to meet the goals of the district and set forth. Tonight is really kind of that. We've been up a couple weeks ago, or probably about three or four weeks ago, we were up, toured the facilities, met with, met with Daryl, met with principals in the buildings and walked around and looked at all, all the areas of the building. We had some initial discussions with, just some initial conversations with staff. That is by no means the only conversations that we'll have with staff. As this process moves forward, we will have opportunities to engage with the staff to really understand what works, what doesn't work in their, in their rooms and their buildings to help to kind of crack what are those, what are those needs? What might those needs in the district be? Tonight, we're going to look at some, just some initial concepts that, that really came from, some of the, the feedback that was had during the community surveys, as well as initial walkthroughs of what we've done. And then ultimately looking ahead, kind of what's next after tonight, is really starting to have those discussions with the board, as a, as a, as a staff, as a community to what are, are there potential improvements that we do want to make, that you do want to make to the district and what might those look like. That is by no means the only conversations that we'll have with staff. Um, as this process moves forward, um, we will, um, have opportunities, uh, to engage with the staff to really understand what works, what doesn't work in their, uh, in their rooms and their buildings to help to, uh, kind of craft what are those, um, what are those needs, um, or what might those needs in the district be. Um, tonight, we're gonna, um, look at some, just some initial concepts that, that really came from, uh, some of the, the feedback that was had during the community surveys, um, as well as, um, initial, um, walkthroughs that we've had. And then ultimately looking ahead, kind of what's next after tonight. It's really starting to have those discussions that were born as a, as a, as a staff, as a community to what are, are there, um, potential improvements that we do wanna make, that you do wanna make to the district? And what might those look like? As you, as those develop, um, as we start to understand what those are, look at how you sort of fund those. How can you fund those, um, improvements? And there's several options to fund that. Um, as you've used in the past, you've used capital outlay dollars. Um, I believe that's what built the, the link there was with capital outlay dollars. Um, there's lease purchase options. Um, there's also bond issue, uh, options to, to fund those improvements. If you were to go to a bond, um, the, the schedule that if you were to look at, and I remember bond issue, um, looks, has some, some steps really every month that, that you need to look at, understanding what that scope might be. And then ultimately passing a resolution to, to run the bond. But really tonight, it's really looking at, um, and talking about kind of what some of those initial, what, what that process looks like, but then also what, um, some of those initial concepts might be to really to start to address, uh, some of the, the concerns that have been raised. Um, the process through the facilities assessment, uh, is one, is, is a, a four-step process that, that initially looks at understanding what those needs are, identifying, um, what are those, those, those curriculum and educational goals that the district is trying to achieve? And then identifying whether the facilities and, um, program space aligns with being able to meet those goals. And that's done through, it's, that kind of understanding is done through, uh, talking with the administration, talking with staff, looking at, um, engaging the, the community surveys that you guys did earlier in the year. Are a good, um, are, are a good tool to, to gauge where, um, the public and what the community is, what their interest is in seeing improvements done at the school. Establishing priorities, understanding, um, what we wanna get out of this process. Is it, you can get, you can get, uh, a plan knowing that this is the systems that need to be replaced just to maintain the building as needed. Uh, there may be other, other, um, outcomes such as looking at, um, additional classroom space or new program space. And then building consensus through that process. It's, it's, it needs to be something that is founded on, on needs, something that, that, that communities, um, identifies that staff and administration are gonna identify as, as needs in the district, different building support around us. And looking at potential different scenarios too, um, as we're gonna see tonight, there's several different scenarios too, um, that we might consider to look at those, um, address those needs. And so finding, uh, consensus around that, um, specific scenario. Just to, uh, look back on the survey that was had, um, earlier in the year, um, some of the highlights that, that were taken out of that. And they were, they're related to, um, we'll see that they relate to facilities, but they also relate to private activities and being able to give students, uh, providing students the, the education that they need to, to be successful. And what might that look like? Uh, there was a lot of talk in the survey about the, the tech building and the, the technical training and the career training that is offered in the district and how might that be enhanced upon. Looking at a lot of talk about, uh, upgrading, um, and renovations at the high school. Particularly looking at the science rooms, again, looking at what are those, uh, skills and, and, uh, career sets that really are gonna equip those students, especially as they leave the, the district or leave the community to, uh, to be successful, um, post-high school. Um, some other things, uh, just upgrades at the high school, upgrading the restaurant, renovating those, knowing that those restrooms right there by the commons are used by the students, are used by, um, people attending sports events are used by attending, people attending, um, programs there. They're used, they're heavily used, um, that may be, that may be, um, close to original, uh, to the building. Uh, but looking at things in the high school, um, such as the restrooms currently. Back on into this building, looking at, uh, knowing that what your growth in early childhood looks like and how that's, um, that, and just the number of students in the, uh, really that pre-K, middle and grade, and how they've kind of taxed this building. Looking at how can we appropriately expand, uh, space for early childhood facilities. Back at the high school, two components that have really been talked about since this building was built, as well as looking at the athletic facilities, um, at the high school, as well as finding our facilities at the high school and what the future of those might look like, um, at the high school building. Um, again, just pulling from that survey, again, a lot of, um, a lot of conversation was had, whether it be in, in the survey responses or in the open responses, about, uh, upgrades to the high school. Recognizing that this is a great building, this building is much newer, um, than the high school, and the high school is in, um, need of, of just general, general upgrades, um, and refreshes throughout the building, as well as some potential for, um, enhancing some program, program opportunities, um, in the career and tech building. As well as looking at the possibility of, uh, potentially the gym, athletic facility, um, auditorium is on the table in the back, but again, looking at early childhood and how can we start to address those needs? And a lot of those are profound in, um, in just the, the numbers of students that you have in your programs there. Uh, so looking at that, that, talking about the, the elementary school, middle school building, um, kind of a, a main driver on that is how can we, um, ease the capacity, um, keep the number of students in the classrooms at the appropriate level, um, that we, as, that as a, as a district would like to see? What are some of those strategies that could, um, could ease the number of students in the building? Uh, or, or spread the number of students out, um, so that the classroom sizes remain where the district would like them to be? Uh, one of those strategies could be adding classrooms, adding additional classrooms onto that building. Another strategy could be moving seventh and eighth grade out of this building and, and into the high school building. That would, um, need additional classroom space, as you know, in the, in the high school there. Um, adding pre-K classrooms, uh, adding preschool classrooms either to this building, um, or as a separate, uh, standalone building, um, but using that to, um, to then be able to allow, those pre, current pre-K classrooms to filter into more elementary school classrooms. Um, and then an option to, um, whether that pre-K is moved up to a, a bigger facility within the district. And so those are just some initial looks at looking at this building specifically, how might we address the needs, um, and, um, address the capacity concern, classroom capacity concerns in this building? Looking at the, the high school, what are some of those upgrades that, that have been talked about? Renovating the, the locker rooms, um, upgrading the, the science rooms, restrooms, uh, the classrooms in the building, renovating the, the tech building, potential renovation of the band room, um, and then, um, establishing a wrestling room in the high school there. And then looking at, there's been, as I mentioned, way back to when this building was being considered in the, uh, there was talk about needing a, a suitable gym that is sized, uh, to be able to hold, uh, hold the, the, uh, tournaments and, and, um, events that, that are comparable to other districts. And really to be able to, um, to address that, that need from a, from a athletic, uh, facility standpoint for the high school. Looking at a gym, the, the two thousand, the twenty-five hundred seat gym, um, as we get into looking at some of those options, uh, options to make it a standalone facility detached from the high school, uh, or one that is attached to the high school. Um, and kind of looking at what the, um, the ramifications of either of those options might be. And then the consideration, uh, is all of it a part of that as, as a storm shelter, um, in its construction? Um, one of the things that when we were back, when we were here and we were, uh, talking with Dr. Back and she made the comment that, um, we're living in a, a three-section school, or we're a three-section school living in a two-section building. And that, um, that comment really, as you look at, um, the sections that, that each of the grades currently have, um, and how might we, what might some scenarios be to, to bring that into more of a, to bring this building into a, a three-section school? And how might you do that with the addition of, uh, classrooms? This illustrates it in the, the addition of middle school classrooms, as well as, um, potentially adding pre-K classrooms that would then allow those three rooms to be distributed back into the, uh, the elementary school.
So, I'm not following your lab. So current is the number of classrooms by grade?
Yes.
That add, are you, in this, does that mean we would add four more for pre-K?
Yeah, no, that would be, um, actually, yes, it would, it would be, um, it would add. So it would potentially add three to four classrooms for pre-K. And then those current three classrooms on that, into the building would then become, uh, would be, this diagram would be a kindergarten, third and fourth grade classroom. And then in this, we'd look at adding three classrooms to the, uh, either two or three classrooms to the middle school to bring those each to at least having three classrooms per grade. Um, and then, and I, this is hard to read on the screen here, but this is just a look at, um, enrollment numbers, uh, totals from, uh, dating, going back to twenty fifteen school year to the current and then projected. There we go. That's a little clearer. But, uh, going back to twenty fifteen, um, to this current year, and then a, uh, a projection, uh, just kind of transferring the grades, um, the previous year, or previous grades into the next grade for next year, looking at, um, the, over the year, over the last, uh, five to six years, you've seen a steady increase in that three to five, uh, age, age student or pre-K students, um, which then translates into, as in through the, um, through the, the elementary school, middle school and high school. But this breaks down and, and looks at kind of where your, um, where your students are, um, in the buildings. I think when this building was built, it was, you had around in two thousand nine, there was, how many, there were two hundred?
Two eighty's.
Two eighty's.
Close to two ninety.
Yeah. So significantly more than, um, than in this, currently in the building than when this building was built. Um, this is, um, this is a map that looks at, um, a footprint of, of, of all, of the elementary school through the high school, just looking at how the space is used, um, whether it's used as classroom space, administrative space, um, athletic space, group service. Uh, but just looking at, we look at how, um, how you're currently utilizing the building. This, this is, is a picture and diagram of, of current utilization of that building. And a similar, uh, diagram, and then expanding it and looking at what is your, your overall site that you have as a district property? And these are, these important looks to kind of get a current snapshot of the usage of the building. And this is paired with, as you go into, um, kind of pair it back with the, um, with the, the classroom talents and understanding how many students, um, and how many classrooms are, are associated per grade. These are just, these are studies that we look at, um, to get an understanding, um, current utilization, uh, of the building as well as the content. Um, to then allow us to start to get into, um, what might some of these improvements look like? And just starting to, taking what we saw on, uh, this previously, starting to diagram what those might look like from a, uh, to allow us to, uh, put square footage to it and then ultimately start to, to budget that. But this one looks at the renovations that would, uh, that have been discussed and identified for the high school, uh, looking at renovating that tech building. During this, during these processes, we also look at, are there, and your code efficiencies or deficiencies where the building might, uh, have, uh, whether it be access, uh, or, uh, in the, the case of the tech building where you kind of walk through the middle of the art room and the woods shop and the metal shop to get to the rest of the building, um, being able to, uh, correct some of those deficiencies from a code standpoint. Then, uh, the renovation of the, the locker rooms, again, that was something that, that we've talked about, that has been discussed for several years. Up, updating those red, those locker rooms, um, to, to current standards. Uh, the renovation, uh, uh, the, the potentially, if, if you were to build a new gym, renovation of that, that secondary gym, what might that space become? Uh, there's a couple of different diagrams that look at how can we add, uh, create a wrestling room in a portion of that gym as, in classroom space. Obviously, we're not gonna take away gym space if, uh, no additional gym gets built. But from a, from a renovation standpoint, looking at what could you utilize that space for? Should you build, uh, a new gym? Uh, renovation of the, the science rooms, the three science rooms in the high school, as well as, uh, that, that library, kind of student or teacher's library area. Renovating those into, uh, more appropriate space for, uh, current needs of the, of the school. Talked about what that looks like if the middle school adding, uh, three classrooms and potentially adding the restrooms onto that wing, the, the middle school wing to, um, provide them the, the three sections that are needed for the middle school. Looking at, uh, pre-K and how do we address, as I mentioned before, those three classrooms that are currently, um, associated with pre-K? How might we turn those back over to the, the K through, uh, K through five grades? And, um, put a, you could put an expansion on the end of the building that would potentially allow you to, um, add classroom space. In this concept, it adds classroom space, uh, potentially creates a new entry now on the south end for that pre-K, the, the pre-K students and their parents. But, but expands that, takes that playground that's, that's where it's at in its place and expands it into a larger playground. But this, uh, this keeps, keeps all that administrative side of the things, um, connected to the building. Um, this next option looks at if you were to go on district property and potentially build a new facility that would be a standalone, uh, pre-K facility. Some of the, the, the positives to it is that it, it allows that facility to standalone access, uh, to standalone to it. It does remove, um, it removes it from a, from an administrative standpoint, or at least makes it more difficult for the administrative standpoint to, uh, have facilities. And then you can just additional site development, potential site development costs that would be associated with it being a standalone.
You go back to that previous one?
Mm-hmm.
That would definitely help with some, uh, the congestion issues that we see with other areas.
Yeah, so some of the other things that we're looking at with this too is are there ways to, um, to maximize or, um, be more efficient with parking? Adding more parking to, to the, the parking lot on the, the middle school, middle school, as well as adding, um, potentially looking as there's, occasionally, can we add additional parking to the backside of this building? Uh, see this kind of dashed line right here? That kind of indicates that, that circle drive area that's back there from a service standpoint. This drive, this area here, um, has to be maintained for, uh, stormwater, uh, detention area. But as you go further, uh, further to the west there, being able to, could look at, could connect it to maintenance, uh, potentially adding some, uh, parking in the back of the building as well as maybe. as well as maybe pull up parking on the south side of the building. Uh, and maybe reorienting that so that, uh, parents and students can come and go from, directly from, uh, that end of the building. Um, jumping over to the high school and looking at what a new gym facility could look like. Um, a couple of different options that we've studied, looking at, um, this, this first page is, is kind of two different options that look at a detached facility and what might, what that might look like from a, from a site plan perspective. Knowing that, um, there's, there's obviously some pros and cons about how it's oriented within, um, kind of the, the schools within the site. Uh, that one up on the upper, the west, western portion, west of the, the tech building there, I believe that's currently off, off school property. But, um, if we're looking at something that was adjacent to the, the school property, that location and then the one that's down to the, to the east of the, the football stadium, is really, is two options for a detached, kind of standalone facility. Obviously, as a standalone facility, uh, depending on where it's at, um, the additional construction of, uh, roads and parking lots would be needed, um, to be able to get people in and out of the, the facility. These next couple of options look at how might you attach a gym facility onto the building? There's really only one place to do that, and, or one, uh, suitable place to do that on the north side there that obviously takes up, um, current parking lot, current high school parking lot. But looking at, are there some opportunities to expand that parking lot, um, into that area where I think it's probably used for some parking in case of the stadium, as well as further down on those old tennis courts there. Um, and then as well as looking at, as we expand that, um, looking at maybe some efficiencies and, and creating some parking along, additional parking along the front of the building. This option that, um, that puts the, the gym towards the front of the building, um, allows you to, um, kind of create a, a common space that would, would become an entry to the, the school, but also a, uh, entry and common space into the gym. This option is showing, uh, some four, uh, four classrooms that, um, would be added to the, would be added to the front of the building, um, to, to add classroom space to the high school, uh, as well as, um, with doing so, you start to, um, bring a consistent look, um, from the, the south end of the building and the elementary school across and wrapping around the high school there for, um, consistency from a, from a street perspective. Um, this is another option, just a, um, a slight modification, um, to add how that might look, um, some different configurations. And then these are really just concepts to, to begin a discussion of, of what that might look like. Um, and we'll get into, as we go further along, get into really what are those needs, um, in each of these facilities? But this is, um, just some options to start that conversation. This one looks at aligning those gyms, um, more in a row and locker rooms more connected. Uh, but it does take out a portion of all of the tech building and the, um, necessitated to be rebuilt. Um, conceptually, it's shown to be rebuilt, um, kind of up there to the west, uh, adjacent to that, um, to the Boscombe building there. Um, so those are really, um, those are, um, those, the concepts that have been initially developed, um, and used as a starting point for discussions for you guys to, um, to, uh, dive deeper in and kind of look in depth and, um, talk with constituents and staff. And really understand are, um, any of these ideas something that, um, you want to consider as a district for, uh, facility improvements and, um, starting to develop what kind of what those, um, what those options might look at? Um, as we kind of, as I close out, look at, um, kind of going, jumping back to the schedule I had in the front, but really tonight is, um, welcome any further discussion on the concepts, um, or, or the concepts that maybe you didn't hear, um, in general terms tonight that, that, um, you'd like us to, to further explore. Um, and then as you have a chance and have an opportunity to kind of dive in and, and look at these more in depth, really understand kind of as a district, uh, what are your priorities for, what do those priorities look like? So that as we start to, um, bring this, this list of potential options, we sort of narrow it down into what are your top priorities to be able to address, um, from a facility standpoint? And then we use that to start crafting budgets around, kind of priorities and budgets. How sometimes go hand in hand? Um, so being able to, uh, understand the priorities and start to look at, um, what those budgets, how the budgets might, um, hit on those priorities. And then just lastly, that if, uh, if this does become a bond issue, um, or I think before that, looking at what are those options again, uh, whether it's done through cap- whether improvements can be done through a capital outlay, whether they can be done on these purchase options or the, the district would consider a bond issue? And just understanding what those steps that are necessary to, to move forward, move towards a bond issue, um, in November or, um, if November hits on a general election, um, you have the option to, uh, be outside of a general election by sixty days to, you know, special elections. Uh, with, during elections, you have, you have opportunities to, to be a part of that as well. So, with that, I will, um, answer, happy to answer any questions or, um, have discuss, have additional discussion?
Will you show it using the old battery base?
Uh, so, so that's kind of a tricky, um, just because of the accessibility of that. Probably it's, um, it's, it's not accessible from, if you have somebody in a wheelchair. Um, so in these proposals would be to bring that, that use, that that would be essentially the storage or kind of on-student space potentially down there unless we wanted to explore putting in an elevator to get down to that lower level.
What's the requirement? Is an elevator required or is it like the lift you see with the rails? That someone can sit on and ride down? Is that?
So you could, yeah, those, those, um, you can do, um, uh, a, a chairlift would satisfy that need. Um, I believe that, that stair that you currently have is wide enough and I think you could accommodate, uh, a chairlift in. And I know sometimes we've looked at, um, some buildings and they don't have, just the, the configuration of the stair doesn't allow, um, for that. But I believe that you could actually do that on the stairs that you have there. It's, with a chairlift could satisfy that need, then there's, there's such that they can pull them out of the way when they're not in use.
Other questions?
No, I have a question. If the gym was moved kind of to a piece of land that we do not currently own and have to purchase, were there any other drawings that had pieces of it on land that we would have to acquire that we don't currently own? Or is that the only one?
Um, so we, we actually started out, um, putting it out here, um, and then you said there always recently, uh, what is recently?
New care facility that was built. We looked at that spot just because of good road and the accessibility that obviously that taken up with that, that, so none of the other detached buildings are on around. We don't, we don't, just that. Is that what you're asking?
Well, the, and the one we draw, he had the new detached gym, am I right?
That one there would require access, require property, right?
This, this one right here?
No, this, this one down here has part of them.
It would, yes, I believe there's, your property is, yeah, right there. So, yes, it would require some additional.
Both detached options would require?
Additional.
Property.
Then it, yes.
So, the one that does require that, two of those are attached.
Yeah, they're, um, really kind of, and they're really, um, these, these first two are really similar just looking in different orientations and, and that's not a decision, I mean, that's something that would come through time and understanding what the best, um, what our program needs for that facility are, as well as what works best in terms of a connection into the existing building. Looking at is there, does one minimize the impact on the, the site parking more than another one might? So really, it's kind of, these two are, are pretty much the same option. They're just showing that, um, eventually we'll hone in on what that, that best option is. Um, and then this option was just looking at the, the continuity of having the gyms together, locker room spaces together, um, but that takes up where, either a portion of that tech building or all of that tech building where it's located and, um, potentially, and would need to find new, find a new home for that tech building. Uh, this one does also look at, we looked at, it does minimize, obviously minimizes the impact to that existing parking lot in terms of taking over, uh, parking lot space. I think you would, um, rather just continue to use that space for, for, for parking. And then eventually when you did additional parking, could move into that tennis court area there.
And I'm sure this out, we've known on the board, but I'll put on the website, all of that.
Yeah, so this information will be on, on the district website and, um, you know, but there's, there's really kind of two. There's, there's plans in this presentation and there's, we're standalone plans that, um, are the kind of, just a little bit darker. Um, so that can be, um, looked at. I didn't, we didn't get into it too much, uh, but looking as we make these improvements, looking at, you know, is there ways to add additional parking along the front of the building here for the high school? As well as potentially expanding some of the parking, um, in the, in the elementary school, middle school apartment up there. Um, kind of keeping the drive entrances as they are, but, uh, being able to add part. I think there's, we can, um, gain a, a fair amount of salt and now by just taking up some of that great space, uh, the apartment up there.
I guess, and maybe this is too detailed of a question, but, you know, we've, we've had a, um, uh, a lot of interest in not only the, um, gym that sizes, that we size to accommodate some of the tournament requirements today's work. We've also had a fair amount of interest in how do we further promote the fine arts facility? That's a little more, um, suitable, I guess, for that side of our, uh, district as well. Are these gym options something that account for a fine arts usage in some way, shape, or form? Or we can kill two birds with one stone, so to speak?
Um, right now, it probably just shown as, as primarily gyms. It's, um, just because of the, the seating, uh, seating orientation that, that gyms and fine arts have sometimes don't mesh that well together. Um, that's not, not to say that, I think it's, it's, I think it's worth a study that if, if you did want to say, if you s- if you said, yeah, we really want that gym to be able to, to accommodate, uh, uh, whether it be an auditorium setting, um, to look at, we'd have to look at just what that, what that might look like from a, from a program design standpoint, to be able to, to take it from a competition gym to also a, um, to a, uh, performance fine arts venue as well. And, and look at, I mean, you've got, um, you know, we just have to, right now, they're just, they're the front area geared around athletics and, and gym setting.
Yeah, knowing the, the requirement for a gym that size is, you know, in comparison to me, that you never build a church for Christmas and Easter, you know, we've got to be careful to go, spend a lot of money for just a couple of times a year as well. Um, you know, it would be nice to weave in some multi-use opportunities there. And that may not be able to be exactly what an auditorium would be like in every district. Anyway, just a question.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's definitely, um, as I mentioned, this is really just a starting point and a joint starting point. That's the kind of feedback that I think ultimately will, will better these, better these concepts and, um, get you to, um, to what's appropriate for the district when you're managing.
Ms. Nagy?
Well, I kind of touched on my concern. I, I don't agree with you. I mean, we, we miss it out here. We don't realize it's on issue.
Oh, agreed, yeah.
So you kind of touched on it now. That was my, 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 my thinking about the idea and it's still missing.
Yeah, no, I, fair point. That's one I want to make sure we, we touch on is that we get the most for our money with whatever we propose and, and get something that hopefully speaks to the vast majority of the interests of the district and not just certain segments.
Mm-hmm.
We've got a number of folks here that, any other particular questions on this subject? One last? So I guess, um, I should, I thought. So, great overview, by the way. That definitely is, uh, very helpful to get the visual, um, for folks to sort of process that just a little bit and see it on paper. And I know for me, until I see it visually, it's hard to comprehend how, uh, how that might look. So thank you for that. It's helped, certainly helped me as well. Any question of the architects from the board at the moment? I guess, in the absence of any of those questions, Daryl, I guess the next step.
Yeah, the next step would be to go ahead and, and, uh, I have the proposal there at your desk for up front or at your place from HTK to continue to work towards this. Uh, the, all the things that you've heard about that would come in the future, that's in that letter. It gives you some timelines, uh, in the end, the above, the scope of the work we've seen, the contract, I've read it. It, it's good. Again, HK has worked with us since nineteen sixty-nine or seventy, whenever the high school was built. Uh, uh, the lump sum fee of twenty-seven thousand dollars would get HTK, a lot of our son's engineers to move forward with taking the concepts and putting them into more real drawings and then moving on. Again, the, so my recommendation is that you hire HTK to do that work. It's part of the long-term facilities and, and short-term facilities process at the cost of twenty-seven thousand dollars.
I guess any, any questions from the board about the proposal itself from HTK at this point? I think it's, um.
And how to include the work that's been done in the future. Yeah, if the bond issue is passed, there is additional funding there, but we're not at that point. So, we can talk about that at, at a later meeting.
Well, the path forward at this point, though, is to make the announcement, make sure it's, these are the questions that is. I don't know further. This, by no means suggests that what was presented tonight is an approved design.
Suggests that this was the concept that we start with and move forward with.
Oh.
Correct that?
I was saying that looks like where everyone's.
Yes, yeah. We know there will be a lot more input from a lot more people funding it. In fact, Zach was very adamant about that before he left the day that we did do the tours that he didn't want people to think, oh, it's not something, there will be that. Those of you that worked with, we built this building, it'll be a standalone facility.
Okay. I guess with no further questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve or, or any more discussion?
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the proposal from HTK, uh, for their scope work and moving forward. The amount proposed is twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Got a motion and a second for a moment? All in favor? All right. Thank you. Twenty-one dash one fifty-four, uh, we have, uh, Christine. Twenty-one dash one fifty-four, we have Christine from the library.
Yeah. Katie is the head of the library, the Central Free Library. She came to us with an incredible proposal and opportunity, and so she wrote it up, and I said, yeah, let's, I mean, we're Ben and I listened to her, we're really excited about this option, and I'm gonna let her present and give you the pluses, and I don't know if it's in my mind, so you might, that's not a lot.
I would, if you don't mind using it, it makes it a lot easier.
Some of us are. I'm here, some of us.
I had a nice conversation with a pair of men about sharing resources. The library has so many resources that are untapped. You pay for them through tax forms, go through this, apply into them, and they're not being used, and they're resources that high school kids could benefit from. There are several digital resources that the kids could use, especially those that are in the pathways, medical. And even though digital is like the hot thing right now, there are still people who want those hard copy books, and we have those too. So, our proposal is that we will make sure that every student at Nima Hospital High School has the library card. That will allow them access to all of our free digital resources and all of our print copy resources. We will also make sure they have state library cards that give them access to all of the state databases and resources. We'll make sure they understand how to use them, and we'll make sure the staff knows how to use them, has any questions about them, and we can help staff if there are any of these that could be used in classroom settings. The great thing about this is, there's really no cost. We already have these resources, and we're just opening them up to other people that haven't had a chance to have them. The only real cost here is for a laptop that we could use and a barcode scanner to be able to check books out at the library itself. The library is more than willing to have a staff member come to the high school and bring materials that are needed, and to help students, interact with students, to help them find the things they need, get into their hands, materials, and they'll help them. So, we see it as a win-win. I don't know if any of you have any questions about, there are still some methodisms about how, you know, when we would actually go up there. We're talking about doing it like during a seminar, so it won't interrupt anybody's class time, and it gives everyone the opportunity to.
Some of the details are, they depend on what the schedule looks like next year, the high school schedule, but the library has been more than gracious to say, we'll fit in wherever you fit us in, and so. The other budget part of it is, we may actually be able to do it with, with some of our subscriptions that are covered by the free library, so. You have a proposal, if you, if that Kate wrote out, I put it on your table, so if you forget, you can look back on it.
So, from a process standpoint, requirements for the district to help enable this, what do you?
I, I would say that because it is a service, although it's free service, it's still a service, we, the board should approve that we go into this collaborative project with the Central Free Library and Nima Hospital High School. Absolutely, no, we're looking at.
Not, not a whole lot of change required from the district, right?
No, no.
Just kind of a win.
Nothing but positive.
It's a great idea, I'm glad you mentioned it.
I want to give credit where credit's due.
Yeah.
It was not for us, it was Kate and her, I think there will be some other people involved in the discussion, that their library board had discussion about it, and so.
Yeah, that's good, she's got, one of my daughters loves library, loves books, loves reading, so it's interesting for her. Questions in the board? Sounds like a pretty easy, yes, Dave? What's that, Dave?
We moved on with the collaboration between the Central Free Library and the Nima Hospital High School.
We've got a motion to move forward. Second for a moment, all in favor? Thank you for your time. All right, Daryl, turn over your unit, it's under twenty-one dash one fifty-five.
I am gonna use the mic too, I know I can be loud enough to use it anyway, because everybody else has. So, a couple of things I want to talk about, we always use this time to discuss where our strategic plan is at. One of the first things is actually not listed, so I want to talk about it, and that is, we're gonna have a site change to the school boundary that they go on and improve last month. But, it's not about student case, it's about enrollment case. We saw that the time between enrollment and school was longer than it normally was, and so, giving back a credit, she, she noticed that and said, how about we move that to the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, which is just a week later? But, enrollment would be a week later, so that, that was one thing. The other, the other part that I did want to talk about, I mentioned it briefly during the bills, was talking about our natural gas bill from the February storm and the cold weather. Our bill is not as high as a lot of people's, it did not go up considerably, I mean, it's still six times as much. Our bill was actually eighteen thousand dollars roughly, not the six thousand dollars that you approved tonight. Using KSP's attorneys, they had told us to, to join our, or to pay, there's a statute that says the most that you can be charged is four dollars and, I think, seventy. That's the most you'd be charged per unit, that's what we pay. We're protesting the other twelve thousand dollars worth. They had hired a attorney group that deals with utility rates, and we are going to join in on that. We, we don't think it'll go to court, it's really about negotiation to making sure that they go through the bill and say, yeah, that's correct, that is correct, that's not correct, you shouldn't pay that. I didn't feel comfortable not paying at all, which was one of the options, I just felt like as a district, we should pay what we should, you know, legally have to. So, we did pay that. Moving forward, I'll keep you in mind, we belong to a consortium, just so you know, that's where this comes from. It's called K-Jump, it's from KSP, we're one of some of the districts that are in it, it's across the state. But, Symmetry is the company that is, that sells us through K-Jump the gas. They actually, that's what they do, that's the only thing they do, they actually don't own any gas, which is one problem, is they go out online and buy it, and sell it. Some of the issues were, they're, they're supposed to, part of getting K-Jump is knowing the volume and the fans and things like that, so these kind of things don't happen. So, just keeping you informed that we, we will eventually, they go, the, the total bill will be lowered eventually. And to join the, to, to our bar, was six hundred dollars towards paying the big law firm that, that's involved now. I paid it for six hundred dollars, if we save six hundred dollars, we're even, and if we save more than six hundred dollars, we save money. I, I do feel like, it was interesting, the Kansas Gas Service that provides everybody else's in town's gas. My bill, first one, was only higher because of usage, there was no increase in the amount charged per unit. And, and so, you know, that, that's stuff that led us to that. The other big news across the nation, and again, whether it's popular or unpopular, it's what's happening, is through the the National Food Service, which is through actually, through the Department of Agriculture, that's where it's run. They have, they're using some of the money from Congress to provide free lunches, we've done that all this year. They're going to extend that next year. One thing my dad taught me is there is no such thing as a free lunch, so sometimes paying that bill. But, it is for all students, it is, it is nationwide, there is no longer requirement for the for your income and your payment requirement, it'll be for everybody. That's great, but there's a downside to it, because the other part of our funding as a school district comes from at-risk money, and that risk money currently in Kansas is based on your free and reduced food lunch rate. Now, while our free and reduced lunch rate across our district is less than twenty-five percent, which may sound high to you or not, but according to, if you compare it to the state, it's quite a lot. We don't get a ton of funding, but twenty-five percent is twenty-five percent, and if, in the past, we took those applications that came in for free and reduced lunches, and that's how we proved, while we're running that. With everybody getting free, there's a little bit of fear of how are you going to collect that data and that information? So, the State Department of Ed is working on, there are districts across the state that bake free and reduced lunches all the time for the whole district. They have a high enough free and reduced lunch rate, usually it's above sixty-five percent district wide, your whole district can get that. And there's a forum that collects the same information, so that we can use that, it's already been approved by the State Department of Ed. So, that we are, we cannot use the free and reduced application from the USDA, it is not allowed, because there are no free and reduced lunches, everybody's getting them. So, we don't want to lose funding, we'll, we'll encourage everybody to fill that out on, when they do their online enrollment, and that way we can still collect that information. I may come with some other proposals later about where that goes, you know, we've always given some thought and actually given reduction in enrollment fees and other things for free and reduced lunch, and we may continue to do that. I'm waiting to see the actual form and to hear some more information from the State Department of Ed. The last one that I want to talk about, which is the one that I'm most excited about, is, in your faculty on your, at the table when you got there, was a list, the Kansas State Department of Ed, actually it's from the State Department, State Board of Education, awards that we were recognized as a district for achieving this school year. They call it star recognition, and you get different colored stars. This started back with the new accreditation model that we used, they wanted to recognize not just about accreditation, but things that were doing, districts were doing well. We've always done well in star recognition, this year we continue to do well, and if you look at the, the letter at the top, post-secondary effectiveness, you've heard me talk a lot about that, and we heard about CTE tonight, it's definitely directly connected. We got a gold star in that, we've always done really well in that. Our post-secondary effectiveness is seventy-one percent as a five-year average, which, which is phenomenal. There are less than ten districts in the state of Kansas that have that. I don't care what size you are, I don't care, big, small, that, that one is, and, and I think a lot of people think of that at the high school level, but it starts below that, and it's definitely district-wide. The graduation is broad, the problem with having small numbers is a few kids can skew very quickly, and our graduation rate is usually always above ninety-five percent, which is, is again, very high. This year, but this number, not this year's kids, you're always a year behind. Our numbers was below that slightly, and so that's why it's broad, so not higher than that. But, prepared for high school graduation, again, they take kids into consideration. What classes, what number of grades do you offer or require, those types of things, you're recognized at the copper level. I'm gonna say the next one for last, because it's really to be one of the best. The individual plan to study, that one you actually have to apply for, and I know that at the high school, this grade group and this group have worked on that application for our individual plan to study. And remember, our individual plan to study is we have kids start working on, what do you want to be? Instead of just letting kids go through school, do whatever, or taking classes, and then going to college, and, you know, man, I thought I wanted to be this, and now I don't even want to do that. You know, I wanted to be a doctor, but now I'm a, you know, a carpenter. And, you know, individual plans of studies, we, we make kids have conversations along with their parents about what does, you know, college is not a career, all right? So, what do you want to do, and we've done, you know, college may not even be an option, and that's where we've done a really good job of letting have the other aspect, which is, you know, technical education where you, you do HVAC and plumbing and all of that, which is a whole nother area where we have a highly successful students, and so, we got the silver award on that. Going back up to the commissioner's award, because one of the things I hear, you guys have heard me say this in years past, I always hear about, yeah, it's easy for you to get these, because the awards we got, less than ten districts got the same number of awards we got. Which speaks volumes about our staff, because that's who's doing this, is our teaching staff. They're, they're the boots on the ground, they're the everyday, they're, they're rocking it out, and, and so, I hear all the time, well, you got good kids, and you got this, and your, your assessed value's high, and you only have twenty-five percent free and reduced, that's why you do so. The commissioner's award is actually based instead, and it's based on your projected, where is your projected level of success, especially on the post-secondary effectiveness? Where are you supposed to, based on all those things I just talked about? You get the commissioner's award for going above, and, and we go out there, if you look at the statistical graph, we're kind of an outlier up here in the graph by ourselves, where we, we see even despite all those great things about our district, we do even better than what the pretty good is. And so, the commissioner gives a award for that, because as he says, if you, if you don't recognize that, and people do just assume, that's because you have whatever, fill in the blank, or whatever it might be. So, I think that one speaks volumes. We have a lot of other great things going on too, you know, you see some of them listed, like kindergarten readiness, that was one you had to apply for, and when we talked about it as a staff, we, we, we did not feel like we had the time, we wanted to focus on kids during this year, instead of on this application. I guarantee that we would do well on that. The social emotional growth is one we've been doing, lots of work on, and continue to improve in that area too. And then civic engagement is one that, again, takes an application, and we may look at doing those in the future, but sometimes you got to focus on, on a few things, and so, that is my strategic plan presentation for tonight. I'll answer any questions about any of the things I've been over, but I do want to just commend our staff, whether every staff member we have, this, this has not been an easy year in education. We've done some things to help support our staff, but they've gone above and beyond using that support and, and just putting their nose to the grindstone and, and making sure our kids stayed at school in person, and then not only that, we're successful. And so, I commend them for that. They, they, they deserve all the kudos, because people sometimes think it's, you know, they give the credit to administration, but it's really, it it's not just the teaching staff, but it's our certified and our classified staff as well. If you haven't been up here, we set up lunches across the building, it takes a little effort to set up lunches. If, if you look at after school and before school and all of that, and that's a lot of our classified staff, so I'm really proud of them. I would encourage all of you to come to our end-of-the-year luncheon on the twenty-first, eight hundred and thirty. And we're gonna celebrate this year, as appropriately we celebrate every year, but this year we're gonna celebrate even more. And, and we got some retirements that we'll celebrate, and some longevity in the district, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, and beyond years. And we always recognize those at that, that luncheon too, so that is the twenty-first. Your first invitation, not the twenty, but it's the twenty-first. Any questions?
I, I don't have any, Daryl, doesn't appear the rest of the board, this is offering any questions, so thank you for the effort, I love the stuff. Definitely to those on the staff here that helped support the school year, definitely congratulations on the awards that the district received, definitely resulted in a lot of hard work and effort, so thank you for all of that contributions. I think there's a couple more sitting back there as well. Thank you, everyone. there are a couple more sitting back there as well. Thank you, everyone. All right, with that, we are at twenty-one dash one fifty-six. Motion from Dave, second from Joe, all in favor? Thanks, everyone.